Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Strobo?
Yes.
Ms. Forsberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yeah.
Ms. Wheaton, yes, Ms. Tenen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to presentation, special guests and recognition. Number one, 2020 budget and property taxes payable 2021 presentation with our truth in taxation hearing. Ms. Amy Schultz.
Okay, first I'll unmute myself. And then I'll try to get my screen pulled up here, so. Can everybody see that? All right, so tonight is our, oops, annual presentation of the truth in taxation hearing. This is something that we do each year. It's required by law to be done between the dates of November 24th and December 28th. So we are meeting within that timeline. This will be our first time attempting this virtually. So, um, once this is approved tonight, later on during as an action item, then we do need to send in the certified levy to the county as well as the Department of Education. And we have about a week to get that done once we complete this meeting. So with that, we'll go through each of this. Many members of the board have seen this several times. So it's a lot of the same information outside of the numbers. The presentation itself doesn't see a lot of changes. So, uh, so with that, uh, property taxes, as we've seen in the past, is one component of revenue for school districts. With that, the state of Minnesota sets the formulas that are used in calculating our property tax levy. And so with that, it is highly regulated. There is not a lot of flexibility for school districts to change the amount that they are levying. We do have the ability to levy less than we are allowed. Um, in doing so, there are only a few levy components where that would make any sense. It is something that we have done in the past. Often though, most of the formulas also have a corresponding reduction in levy, or I'm sorry, in state aid from the Department of Education when we do that. So, um, oops, I hit enter a little too quick. So just one last thing is the county is responsible for a part of this process as well. They do set the value of the property. So each parcel in the district is valued by the county. So when you get those initial value notifications, that is the county telling you what your value is going to be used for in calculating all property taxes throughout the state. The law for truth and taxation is very specific. And there are a few things that are required for us to present on tonight. Those are the current year budget. So that is the 2020-21 school year, as well as the property tax levy itself, which includes a percentage of increase or decrease over the prior year, as well as any significant changes to that. We do need to provide an explanation for that as well. So we'll start with the budget. We do not spend a lot of time on this. There is an entire budget presentation that is done back in June, and that is available for people if they do want to go back and view it. So we'll cover it quickly, though. For the budget for the school year, this was approved in June. No changes have been made to it at this time. So with that, though, we do expect changes to be coming, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on the timeline. But with that, you can see our total budget for the school year is just over 91 million for both revenue and expenditures. And that is for all of the district's funds combined. When we look at that in a graph format, you can see that the general fund makes up 81% of the general or of the school district's revenue. And that makes sense. That is our largest operating account. With that, then, food service and community service also being operating accounts, meaning they support our programs. I'm going to count for all of our programming revenue and expense. Debt service fund for a growing district, it is not unusual to see a percentage as high as 11 for the debt service fund as well, both revenue and expense, given that a growing district often has either additions or new buildings that are bonded for by the voters. A trust and agency is something that we will be moving to the general fund. We talked about that through the audit update to the board a few weeks ago. And so that is something that we will see moving to the general fund as we do revisions. On the expenditure side, the general fund makes up 81% on this. Again, those percentages are very similar as you look revenue and expense in graph format for all of our funds. For the general fund specifically, this is the fund we do spend most of our time on when we refer to budget, because it is, again, our largest program operating budget. So with that, state aids make up 79%. We've, for many years, school districts have said we are heavily dependent on the state for our revenue, which is why these legislative sessions, such as the one coming up, are so important to schools. The tax levy is at 18%. These percentages are within 1% of where they have been the past several years. They do not tend to change a lot year to year as far as percentage of overall. On the expenditure side as well, we have compensation at 73%. So that is all of the salary and related benefits. It also includes purchased salaries. So for our bus drivers, we've pulled an amount in to represent what we would be paying for them as well, so it doesn't show up under purchase services, but rather under compensation. Other areas in that as well are areas like reemployment insurance and workers' compensation insurance. So compensation is more than just our day-to-day payroll. So for a budget review process, while we set the budget in June as required by law, it is reviewed several times throughout the school year. We do give more informal updates to the board throughout the school year, and we do bring a more formal revision to the school board as necessary. And those have to be done by June for this current school year. We do plan to bring at least one revision to the school board, hopefully early spring, late winter, as we have in the past few years. A few big areas we already know of for this are going to be on the revenue side. We are expecting to see reductions for potentially gate receipts, things like that again this school year, as we did during the spring with COVID as well. Also, though, on the revenue side, we have the cares and COVID-related grants from the federal government. So those are about 2.4, 2.5 million dollars that we will be adjusting the budget for as we bring those to the school board for review. On the expense side as well, COVID-related expenses will be our largest changes for revisions. So as we switch over to off-of-budget and on to our property tax levy, with that, you see the levy calendar, and it's something we've talked about with the board. This process really spans almost two full years. We started this past summer with submitting data to the Department of Education, and they use that data then to develop, plug it into all of their formulas that we talked about that they have. That gives us a preliminary levy approval that the school board approves in September. The county then mails out those preliminary tax statements in November, and then the final adoption of the levy by the school board tonight. So the taxes that are related to what is being approved tonight are actually revenue for the 2021-22 school year. So as we look at that, these, these taxes will be collected during the 2021 calendar year. From a school standpoint, it's really 18 months, though, between now and the end of the school year that these will be applied to. So the, the big picture, as far as total levies by fund, shows our four main areas that we levy for. So that's general fund, community service, debt service, which is the principle and interest on our bonds, those are voter-approved bonds, and then our OPEB debt service, which pays for our other post-employment benefits. So that funds the district's liability for post-employment benefits, and that's a large actuarial calculation that we have done for us every other year. So you can see the total increase is 1.92%. Most of that within the general fund, and we will walk more specifically then through each one of these in the following slides. So with that, one of the things to note, we'll get into each component in one of the next two slides, but each of these formulas, again, are set by the legislature, and those then determine how much a district can levy under each specific component. There's three ways that those are calculated: student enrollment-based, actual expenditure-based, and property values. So most of the calculations have at least one component of it based on student enrollment. So when we see an increase in our levy for a district such as ours, usually the largest component of that increase is due to the additional students that we have each year as a growing district. So actual expenditures, there's only a couple of levies that adjust back to what our actual expenses were for a year. We do an estimate, and then they are adjusted after a year closes. So it would be almost two to three full years from now before we would see those adjustments. But those are reemployment insurance and childcare. Property values, the largest area, there's one levy component that is calculated strictly on property values, and that's our capital project levy. But the other ones are, I'm sorry, I keep hitting my computer, and I should walk away from it. Are, that our property values do go into several calculations for equalization, and we'll talk about that in just a couple bullets. Levy amounts do fluctuate year to year based on property values, and what an individual pays will fluctuate year to year based on how their value changed in relation to all other properties within the district. Because so much of our levy is based specifically on the number of students we have, most of those are calculated based on that, and we get that amount at the end. It is not necessarily based on whether, we don't get more because your property value possibly increased. It is spread based on the total amount that we get. So as one person's increases more than another's, they may see an increase. Overall, our shareholders, our residents are actually seeing a decrease if their value stayed the same. So one of the things we just talked about was equalization. For districts that do not have a large amount of value per student within their district, we are given something called equalization, and that is where the state steps in and offers aid to replace a portion of the levy so that the burden isn't so heavy on taxpayers. Spring Lake Park lands a little bit in the middle as a district. We do get equalization still in four categories. We do not get it in some that we used to, as our property values have increased. So with that, these are the levy components within the general fund. So again, you can see the increase in total of 622,000. With that, I'm not going to get into each one of these specifically. You can see a lot of those percentages land in that kind of one to four range. That does make sense when you look at our overall coin up 1.9, general fund being the larger portion of that. Where the percentages get a little skewed are where they're increasing a lot on some of the lower-valued components, such as career and technical. That is another one that is actually adjusted down for when we do not spend at all. It would not be increased from this amount. So we have seen negative credits come through in the past. Adjustments, then, we'll talk about those in just a minute. A very high percentage, but overall, when you're looking at it compared to some of our other components, the dollar value itself is not as significant. So with that, then, those areas that we do receive some state aid to offset the amount of the levy are the local option, which is an amount that was rolled from referendum into a, an amount they're calling it local option, it's $724 per student, operating capital, the career and technical, and our long-term facilities maintenance. So the significant changes, then, we've talked about in general. Those components have increased pretty subtly over the years based on our enrollment. So with that, when going back and looking at if our enrollment had been the same as the previous year, we would not have seen the same level of increase. 40% of the increase was due strictly to enrollment. Another part of that, then, was also the shift in that equalization in those four categories, where as our values increased per student, we did lose out in some of that equalization aid. So the shift was moved from the state to the property taxes. And so with that, our revenue did not change overall, just where that revenue was coming from. The capital projects referendum did increase, and that was due to the overall increase in market value, which was 8.7% within the district. So levy adjustments and abatements, this was where you saw that really large eight percentage increase in adjustments. So when a year closes, and because this is so far in advance of when we will finish out a year, they're all based on estimates, in the estimates on our student counts. So if at the end of a year, our actual students were higher than what we had projected when we did the levy, the state goes back and recalcs every one of those formulas based on your actual enrollment. So when I looked at this, the actual enrollment that we saw for, right now, this is the fiscal '19 school year that the, the largest levy adjustments were coming through, was actually levied back in December of '17. That is where most of that is coming from. We saw 100 students increase over what was projected for levy purposes during that time. Abatements, then, reflect if an individual challenges the value on their property, and it is then subsequently reduced, their taxes then get reduced. But the following year, the county will respread the amount it was reduced by to all parcels within the district. So we don't actually lose the money for abatements. We lose it in the current school year, but then we get it back in the next year. So those are the general fund. Moving on to community service fund, again, these large percentages are in the adjustment column, and again, due to enrollment, and in this case, also our childcare expenses. So for school-aged childcare, it is based on actual expenses. And then the expenses then for fiscal '19 were higher than what they were projected in December of '17. The other ones land very close. So overall, an increase of just 35,000. Debt service fund, this is principal and interest. That is really all that goes into this. So the, in order to make those payments, we do levy or the amount in that. We talked a little bit about the board before. When you see the adjustments on this, that is because we are required by law, as you can see in that first line, to levy 105%. So over time, it builds a little bit of a balance to make sure we have that to pay off the principal and interest as they come due. But as it builds, there is a cap that the state wants for us to be able to keep. So then they reduce it based on a calculation to get back to within what's considered to be a reasonable amount to make the payments. And on the OPEB debt service fund, it is, it mirrors how the debt service fund works. So you can see that as well, with the negative adjustments and abatements. So those were our specific levy component changes. As we look at our market value change, right now, we've got basically a 20-year history. So, excuse me. With that, you can see, everybody was well aware of this. Property values were growing, growing. When the crash hit, they went down. We have since come back and actually increased values over that period for the last two years. So this year, there was a more significant jump in values than what we have seen for several years. So with that, there are, if people are looking for some tax relief for their property taxes, there are three programs that are available. There's a circuit breaker, a special property tax refund, and a senior citizen deferral program. So each one of those have specific either requirements that are either that you had more than a 12% increase in your taxes. There, some are based on income, and others are based on age. So with that, we encourage you to speak with your tax professional or visit the Department of Revenue's website, and that is listed here, for additional information or to see if you qualify. Now, one thing that we are always trying to look for is ways to reduce the impact on our residents, and ways we've done that in the past is to under levy. We talked a little bit about that earlier, where you can levy less than the maximum. We have done that several times, as we have seen ability to do that, where we, the funding was not needed for that next year. In addition to that, we have done several bond refundings over the last 10 years. That is similar to refinancing your mortgage when the rates are favorable in order to reduce your payments. And so when our payments go down, we levy less to the taxpayers. 100% of the savings does get passed on to the taxpayers. So the district does not keep any of that. So you can see on an average home, and this was done at 200,000 a few years back, their overall taxes are $120 lower per year because of the refundings that we have done. And we do look at refunding opportunities at least every six months in order to make sure that we are taking advantage when there is an opportunity. So we'll do a public comment. One of the things we actually didn't get the slide in here this year, but the board saw it earlier, is, and maybe we should add it before it goes on to our website. And we will post these to the website tomorrow. But there's, as a property owner, if your value stayed the same for the payable 2020 and 2021 school year, you would see a reduction of between 5.2 and 5.4% in your school district property taxes. What many residents have probably seen is an increase in their property value. You may still see a decrease, depending on where, if your percentage of an increase was higher than others within the district. So with that, we are required to open this up for public comment, and so we will do that right now as we kind of wait to see if there's anybody out there. And I know Karen is monitoring this to see if anybody has questions. But if the board has some, we can answer those as well.
Amy, there's no further questions.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions at this point?
I have a question. I don't expect you to have the exact number handy, but generally speaking, how much are we able to under levy without resulting in a loss of state aid?
It depends on which component you want to do that in. In some, it would be, with our reemployment, it was $40,000. That is one area that we would be able to under levy without a corresponding amount. The other common one is the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. That is the one we have looked at most closely in the past. Right now, we are looking at levying the maximum for this year. And if we do not need to do that again in future years, that's something we're looking at over the next few months to see if that would be necessary beyond this following.
What, what goes into that decision?
Typically, for, when it comes to the long-term facilities, when we have done that in the past, we decided to use general fund dollars to offset it. So it is using a different source to pay for the work that we do still need to get done. Maintaining our buildings has been a priority in the past after taxpayer support and renovating or building new ones. So in doing that, we do have that ability. The funding in order to get those projects done then would have to come from another source, which would be our general fund.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have questions for Amy on this? We, as we, I think noted in our last work session, we will be voting on, on this tonight. So if anybody else has any questions, this is a good time.
And if anybody does have questions later, they are welcome to.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Moving on to, I should check one more time. Karen, we still don't have anybody on the call? I can't hear you, sorry. Looks like no.
There's nobody on the call right now. And Erin, the next presenter is going to be presenting through the phone call, and Erica is going to help with the presentation, switching the pages.
Way to go, Erica.
And Erin, you should be able to hear Erin now.
Are you there?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you, and we are now moving on to our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Take it away.
Great. I guess I'll take it here. I didn't get a chance to ask if Amy wanted to start, but I'll, I'll just go through the presentation if you can hear me okay. And please stop me if you can. Thanks, Erica, for your help with the presentation there.
Yeah, and Erin, I probably should introduce, I probably should introduce you, I guess. I think most of the board members have, have met you previously. But Erin is a partner with our independent audit firm of Malloy Montague Karnowski Radasevich. And so he's been doing our audit, actually, since before I started in the district. So I know, actually, there are some board members that are, have, you know, known him as their auditor for longer than I've been here. But with that, he's going to present the audit report. The board's been given the full reports, and we're given a quick summary a few weeks ago as well. They'll get into a little more detail tonight, but please ask any questions as we go along. We'll make sure we open it up at the end for questions as well. But if it's easier to ask a question at the moment, please go ahead and do that. And also, just for the public, if anybody is interested, the reports, all the audit reports will be out on the website tomorrow as well. So Erin, I'll let you present.
Great. Well, thank you. Hopefully I don't have too much of a delay here. Carrie, help me get this up. We're having a little technical difficulty, but hopefully this will work okay for us. So as mentioned, on the independent auditor with MMKR, we completed our audit for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And you should have three reports before you this evening, the comprehensive annual financial report, we've also issued the special purpose report, and then our management report. The PowerPoint I have before you has just paged some of the slides that we do include in the management report, and I will run through that and save some time for some calls or questions at the end. So with that, I'll move on to the next slide, our role as independent auditors. Yes, and to issue an opinion on the financial statements for the district's financial audit, also to issue a report on internal controls and compliance for that financial statement audit, as well as for that expenditureal single audit, and then as well as the requirements of the Office of the State Auditors legal compliance manual for the state laws and regulations. With my next slide, we'll get right to the results of our audit. So a police report, they sit all on one slide here. We have issued what is known as an unmodified opinion. There is an emphasis of the matter paragraph this year because there was a new GASV standard that was implemented with GASV 84, changing some of the way scholarships, in particular for your district, have been reported, including them within the general fund, and that's restricted fund balance in the general fund this year. A little more drastic for some of our other districts, where they separately issued a report for student activities, they were included in the general fund, which your district has done for a very long time. With regard to the internal control and compliance reports, as you can see, we've noted them all with one bullet point, which includes the report with no material weaknesses or increases of non-compliance, which regard to any of our audit testing completed with regard to the federal single audit, our audit over the internal controls and compliance with financial statement that were required, and then with regard to our testing of the legal compliance manual. My next several slides focus on the primary operating fund for the district. That general fund, your largest operation, or the largest of the individual funds. Here, we've got a 10-year presentation of the cash investment balance, the unrestricted fund balance, and then expenditures as a gauge for the size of the operation. You can see this past year, there was just a decrease in cash and that unrestricted fund balance compared to 2019, but entirely as planned with the final approved budget. I know for some of our members, you'll remember back in the early years that we've got included here, there were changes with how the tax shift was employed at that point, as well as the metering of state aid payments. So they have been fully paid for many years now, but we'll have to see what, what we have moving forward. With the next slide, we look at the general fund financial position of a little more detail in terms of the fund balance, breaking that down between the equity components of the fund balance. And I have a bright note here to make sure I don't forget to mention this is the fund balance percents we show here are slightly different than the policy percent that you have, and, and also that you may have noted earlier in the management report, if you have a chance to look through the details of that. We do provide a presentation with the statewide fund balances that the Minnesota Department of Education calculates. So there, there are some differences in those percentages. When we look and complete the calculation for your fund balance percent for your policy, the district ended with an unassigned fund balance of 32.5% of unassigned fund balance, which is greater than what you see at the bottom of this slide at 30.2%. And that's primarily due to the difference in how it's calculated for the fund balance policy, where we back off some of the operating capital expenditures, as well as the long-term facilities maintenance expenditures, if I'm remembering that correctly. When we look at the next slide, we've got your adjusted ADM, or that average daily membership, to show the number of students you served this past year, showing an increase over the prior year. And actually, you've had quite growing enrollment each of the years that we presented here when we look at that ADM compared to the prior year, which was up about 1.2% when compared to the 2019 level of students served. And I've got a couple more slides for the general fund. This slide here, we focus on the general fund revenue budget compared to actual, as well as to prior year. This slide here, we focus on the general fund revenue, budget compared to actual, as well as to prior year. When I look bottom line for your total revenue for 2020, June 30th, 2020, total revenues totaled $72.4 million for the general fund operation. Which was slightly over budget, about six tenths of one percent over that final budget, and about 3.8% over the prior year. That increase, as you can see, largely in state sources, primarily due to serving more students. There was more funding improvements with the general education formula law, as well as special education, and then safe schools funding in 2020. One other point I'd like to point out in the general fund is the concentration of those sources. When you look at the state sources for just the general fund this past year, accounting for about 78.5%, followed by then property tax was at 16.6% for this. And then my next slide is the last slide I have for the general fund. So similar to revenues, we've got the general public expenditures, budget and actual compared to prior year again. Breaking it down to within the comprehensive annual financial report, we largely present by program. So we look at the administration, district support, elementary, secondary instruction, special education. And what we've done here is provide a presentation or comparison by that object category, with salaries, employee benefits, purchase services within the general fund. So when we look in total for the past fiscal year ended, your expenditures amounted to $73.9 million within the general fund. And coming in under budget or within which was approved of appropriations by 4.4%, so just under budget there. And about 7% over the prior year. So what I had noted in the under budget, as you can see within the graph as well, is largely within the capital area, which the district has assigned. Some of those dollars are anticipated to be expended within assigned fund balance in the general fund this past year. The increase you can see was largely as planned within salary and benefits, as you can see. Coming in so closely to budget with that increase over the prior year slides that we presented. And within the capital spending with planned use of unrestricted general fund dollars for capital purposes in 2020. All right, my next slide will shift here a little bit and look at the other two operating funds. So as I mentioned, we had spending within the general fund of about $74 million. And when we compare that to the food service and community service funds, spending for these funds is 2.7 million for the food service operation, and about $3.5 million for the community service fund this past year. As I know you're well aware, and the impact with the COVID-19 hitting the operations, it really only hit the last quarter for the year I'm presenting. And I know you're working way through it with this entire school year. But these two funds in particular were hit hard by the impact of the last quarter and that change. The food service fund had to approve transfer in to help support operations as well as the community service fund. When we look at the year-end fund balance, the food service fund was nearly breakeven and ended the year at 2.9% fund balance. And you can see the community service fund saw a slight decrease with their fund balance down to a little over, just under $9,000, at two tenths of one percent as of year end. And I have just a couple of slides, and we can open it up for questions. This slide shows the internal service fund. These are used for the district's self-insurance for health and dental plans for the district. As you can see, when we look at that operating income line, operations for this past year were very similar to what was incurred or encountered the past two years from COVID-19 operations. And then my last slide is a consolidation of all of the funds for the district. So to this point, we've been looking at them on an individual fund basis. What I believe all my districts focused on it throughout the year was the budget process, when adoption. This was kind of a one-time snapshot where we consolidate all the funds, and then also incorporate that long-term perspective of including the capital assets and the long-term obligations for the organization, including the statewide pension obligation. So when we look organization-wide for the Spring Lake Park schools for the year end of June 30th, 2020, you can see there was an increase of about $1.3 million. And almost entirely within that net investment and capital asset category. And what that is telling me is that your district is adding and investing within the capital assets. And I know within the budget process and the general fund, and discussing last presentation, using resources in the general fund for capital purposes contributes to that. As well as the wrap-up of the construction fund activity that's been occurring. And then the district is paying off the related debt on those capital assets at a faster pace than the depreciation on the related infrastructure for your organization. The unrestricted, so the other significant change from prior year is decreasing about $4.3 million, as you can see, near the bottom of the table we've got here. And that is due in large part to the adjustments for pensions with PERA and TRA, which we've noted in the top half, and that reconciliation, which had an impact of about $4 million change this past year. Which then impacts that unrestricted category. So with that, I know I went through a significant amount of information pretty quickly. I hope there wasn't too much of a delay, if any, between the slides when I speak. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions at this time.
No, it sounded great. Does anybody have questions?
Just a comment, I'd love to see, you know, the good news, it seems like it keeps going and even gets better. So again, thank you, Erin, for all your years of helping us, and to our administration for staying on top of this and doing such a great job for our district to put us in such a good financial position, so.
John, we are really grateful to everyone for keeping us in this good position. Anyone else?
Thank you, thank you.
Get it. All right. Amy, anything else on financial matters for tonight?
I think we have a financial presentation also.
I hope that wasn't a question for me.
All right, yes, we do have a financial presentation as well. So we're done with the audit, we can move on to that.
On to that, moving on to discussion reports and information items, effective operations improve our effective management of human, financial, and physical resources. Yes, monthly financial report for October 2020, Ms. Amy Schultz.
All right, we'll go back to sharing my screen again. So monthly financial report in December, so this is for the month of October, same format that the board is used to seeing. So one thing that is starting to stand out are the cash balances in our food service and community service funds. This isn't a surprise, given that we are, have continued to pay our employees and run all of our programs. And in these two areas, we are not serving as many meals with kids not being on site. And we aren't running all of our community ed programs as well. So seeing those go negative, that is something that we'll also be discussing as part of a budget revision process as well, and how we work with those. Outside of that, you can see the receipts. October is a large tax collection month, which is why you see $10 million there. October and November are the largest ones that we see for the current levy, which is the pay 2020. So that is our beginning and ending cash balance for the month of November, or sorry, October. And the statement of revenues, this report shows our cash receipts for September, as well as year-to-date, and how the year-to-date amount compares to our budget. And how that budget compares to the last two years, also through the month of October. So you can see we are lower in all three of our operating funds. And again, this is not a surprise, fewer meals served for fewer community ed programs running. Also, within the general fund, we were asked to update our enrollment numbers. As we have seen a slight decrease in enrollment from what we had projected when we first submitted our numbers to the Department of Education a year ago. Because they have gone down just slightly, it does affect the metering payments that we receive on a cash basis as well. So those, along with not having the same level of gate receipts that we did for our follow-ups sports, are showing up in our general fund, being just a little bit less than what it has been in the past. In addition to that, then you can see within our other funds, debt and OPEB, those are relatively similar to where they have been in the previous years as well. Sometimes those go down, up or down just a little bit based on small payments that are made one month on the 30th, and then the next month on the 1st, so. Expenditures, then, there's not a lot of surprises here either. Within the general fund, you can see that this is broken out into each of the components of the budget that we have seen on some slides and other presentations. But compensation really is right in line with where we have been in the previous years. The largest area of this where it's much lower than last year is in that capital expenditure category. Where we, you know, in the past, we had not budgeted for several million dollars worth of projects that carried over from the year before. So in October, we had spent much of the budget already because we were finishing up last year, the athletics and activities work at the high school. So that caused the 92% in last year to be higher than it has been historically. So again, food service and community service on the expense side, you can see those are also lower. So while our revenues are down, food service, we're still through October, having all of our staff working. However, because the amount of meals being served is lower, we are also buying less in food to serve as well. So the expenses are also down. And then we also have then our debt and trust accounts and OPEB, and those again are very much in line with previous years. So this is the end of the three finance presentations for the night, if there are any questions.
Anybody have questions? Thank you for doing a great job, like I always do, keeping us informed, giving us just enough information. Anybody have anything? Thanks, Amy. All right, moving on to superintendent's report. Who we have not heard very much from tonight.
No, I'm able to just actually listen to other people present, which is kind of nice for change. So here we go. What I do want to do is, sorry, that little texting me that is covering up my notes. I want to provide an update on our current status for learning models and what we're looking for after break. That's kind of going to be the focus of my superintendent's update tonight. We're currently, as you all know, in the, implementing the extended flexible learning model. This is the model that all 41 association of metropolitan school districts are currently in, as well as each district in Anoka County. We had put a pause on any at-school learning for small groups for two weeks following Thanksgiving, based on guidance and direction that was provided by our regional support team. That's comprised of representatives from the Minnesota Department of Health, Department of Education, and Anoka County Health. That was also combined with difficulty we were having in staffing, programming at that point, and providing effective and safe staffing, just having the numbers of people to be able to do that. This week, however, we were able to, yesterday, resume some of that small group at-school learning for a limited number of students. Just to provide you some context, we provided, we started center-based special education programming for our students, so that's taking place at each of our schools. Also, we started, we resumed some of our one-on-one special education evaluations, providing one-to-one mental health counseling. And we also had at each of our school, teachers and principals identify those students who are really at risk, some of those students that were struggling and bringing them in for in-person instruction. Most of those students in that kind of group of students started today. So, and again, that's happening at each of the schools in our district. Looking to the future, we are encouraged by the declining numbers of the new COVID-19 cases that we've seen in Anoka County. It's still quite high, higher than you're seeing, you know, through October, and has our number above, the case count number above 100, but it's declined significantly from where it was. And so while it's still above the threshold defined by the state, we are encouraged to see these numbers trending in the direction we'd like to see them trending. And we'd very much like to reopen our schools further for learning in January. I do want to clarify, because I've had this question this week from a number of parents, those parents that did select extended flexible learning, and they just wanted to be sure that when we transition back to bringing kids back to at-school learning, that we continue offering that option, and we will. That's actually required by the Safe Learning Plan, that we continue that option. So we will continue that. But winter break begins next week, begins on Wednesday of next week. We'll resume school on January 4th in extended flexible, with an extended flexible learning model or distance learning. We're going to use the week of January 4th to assess our ability to transition back to a less restrictive learning model as soon as we can. And this will be based on a number of factors. First, guidance, hopefully with increased clarity by the Minnesota Department of Health and Department of Education. In a recent meeting with, and in a recent meeting with the Minnesota Department of Health, it was shared that the original case count data that was used this summer to drive school learning models was the best tool that they had at the time, based on the best data that they had at the time, and they've learned a lot since then. They also shared that they, they did see a strong relationship between the ability of schools to effectively and safely staff their schools. One of those case counts hit 50. So when the case counts per 10,000 hit 50 is where schools really started to struggle with staffing, and that's what our experience was in Spring Lake Park as well. They said transmission is happening in the community more than schools, but is that background transmission increases, it also influences schools. And they're looking to provide clarity and guidance that ensures schools can be operationally safe. And that's implementing the mitigation factors, like they said, schools did a good job with that, and they didn't see a lot of transmission happening at school. They want to be able to do that, but they want to also be sure that schools don't cause harm to other agencies like the healthcare infrastructure. So they're looking to provide greater clarity and guidance with that. So related to that, the superintendents, what we've asked for is just communication and guidance that really provides clarity for everyone about what model we can operate it. Because with the current numbers, no matter what they are, as we heard from some parents tonight, they want their kids back at school. We want the kids back to school as soon as we can. We also want to make sure that people feel safe when they're doing so. So we just need that increased clarity rather than just a number. And if, because it's going to be, likely it could be a long time before we're back down to that 50. So hopefully they can provide some clarity that we don't have to wait all the way till 50, and they can do it in a way that communicates to our staff, who would be in the schools, that, that we're in a safe setting. Because ultimately, we need to have that balance on both sides. So that's important. So based on existing guidelines, we're going to need to assess case data. That week of January 4th, and meet with the regional support team to receive their direction and guidance, which is based on county case data, community spread, and healthcare infrastructure. The week of January 4th, that's what we're going to be looking at. And we have to then finally also that week, be able to assess our ability to effectively and safely staff our schools. It would be premature to say that we could reopen on January 4th because we have no idea what will be happening with the virus at that time, as you know. It can shift dramatically in a matter of a couple of weeks. More important is we won't, until we come back from break, have that chance to connect with our staff. For example, we started programming just this week, as I said, Monday and Tuesday, and we already had difficulty staffing one of our setting-three programs. I want to be sure that I'm not violating any staff members' data privacy by revealing which one it is. But we've already had to look at moving one of those programs to distance learning after just one day because of the ability to effectively staff that program. So we have to get people back that week of January 4th, make sure that we have the staff in place, meet with the regional support team, and then we'll look at, hopefully can transition back. Also, we know that there's some work being done by the Department of Health and Department of Education to hopefully provide more clarity and guidance. Also, great news is that vaccine has been shipped. There's also news that possibly in mid-January, they'll be able to start providing that vaccine for school staff. I know that David Law, you know, Anoka Hennepin, and myself, both have received messages about that without a lot of details at this point. But hopefully over here over the next couple of weeks, we'll get more details on that. So all that said, in a nutshell, we very much want to get our kids back to school, those that want to be back in school, we want them back in school as soon as possible. And we'll be assessing the ability to do that, that week of January 4th, and try to do so as soon as we can. So we appreciate the amazing work of staff, and really appreciate the support and understanding of our families. And that's where we sit right now. So just to open it up, if there's any questions based on that.
Anybody have any questions for Jeff before we move on?
I have one. When we're now in extended flexible learning, are we still meeting with the regional support team on a weekly basis? Is that how that's working?
It's on an as-needs basis, so we did meet with them, middle of the week last week, middle of, it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week, we met with them. We're not meeting with them this week, just because we're not looking at, obviously, with just two days of school, next week bringing the students back, but we'll meet with them. obviously, with just two days of school, next week bringing the students back, but we'll meet with them again on the week of January 4th.
Okay. And then if I'm understanding it correctly, the, the hope is that during the week of January 4th, when you meet with them, there, there will be increased clarity at that time to work with the regional support team?
I just hope there's increased clarity overall about, are we still having to operate with the 50, 30, 20, those case count numbers, those three kind of guidelines, or if they're going to be, are there going to be new numbers, or is there going to be something different than that? And also, we're hoping that the regional support team will provide us greater clarity with what we can or are not able to do, so.
But the, the increased clarity is not necessarily coming from the regional support team, that's coming from MDH and MDE directly?
Yeah, I, I would say the regional support team's been good about the guidance that they provide within that framework that's provided to them. 50, 30, 20, but then they also underneath that, they'll provide data to us about what the impacts are within healthcare, what their recommendations are for us to be in session or not be in session based on what's happening within the healthcare infrastructure, things like that. So that part, I think, could continue, but what we want is, is they're going to, for example, do we have to come all the way down to 50? They need, they need some of that increased guidance as well.
Based on your participation in, I guess, the, the working group and with your meetings with the regional support team and other officials at MDH and MDE, what's your level of confidence that you're going to get the increased clarity that you desire by the week of January 4th?
That's a great question, Michael. It always works a little slow. Anytime you work for the state, but I would say I was encouraged by how I heard, what I've been hearing from the Department of Health and what they're wanting to say. They also, you know, they recognize that things, for the most part, schools have done across the state, have done a good job with that, an effective job with the mitigation strategies they've seen that schools are able to run. So I do believe those things are in place. I think they, they have the desire to do that. And how much support they get on the school administration, other and Department of Education to do so, that's what we'll find out. But all that said, my hope is that we do have some increased clarity, not the week of January 4th, but that following week.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Those are good questions, Michael. Thank you. I know those are the questions that everybody has, so it's good to address them. Thanks. Anybody else?
Amy, I would add, just so the, the school board's aware, right now, our plan is to put a letter out to parents, families and staff tomorrow, just communicating this, the plan of continuing with the EFL, starting with that the week of January 4th, assessing where we're at at that point, and then having another communication that week with people. So we'll get that out tomorrow. In addition, there's the governor's announcement tomorrow, and we'll see what that brings. So there may be some clarity in just the, the near future, what that, what that will impact for us. So we're going to wait to put out our announcement plans for that week of January 4th, until we hear from him tomorrow. Find out what that is, but I think the biggest thing is just, and I, I don't know if I was clear on that, but we're really, what I'm hoping to see, and I know what my colleagues are seeing, is just a clarity in that allows us to bring kids back to school, as long as we can do it in a safe way, which we believe we can with the mitigation factors we have, as long as we're able to staff where the community transmission isn't impacting our staffing levels in a way that we can't, we don't have the staff at school. We want to be able to do that. And what we need from them is clear communication and guidelines, so our teachers and staff feel safe in doing so. Because that's what we're trying to do, is just balance these. And I don't, when I say competing, I don't mean like this kind of competing with one another, but there are just concerns at two ends of a paradox, really, and how do we balance those? Because we need everybody to feel, feel good about where we're going. So that's what we hope to see happen the, in early January, that we get some clarity on that, so we can go forward because as you heard tonight, we do want to get, and I agree with those parents, we want to get the kids back at school as soon as we can. In a way that's safe and everybody feels good, good about what we're doing.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
Um, are you, like, piggybacking on what Michael just said, that was actually the question I was going to ask. How, how sure are you that you're going to get that in the first week of June or of January? Are you, if, you must be sure enough, otherwise you probably wouldn't be putting it in a newsletter tomorrow. I'm, I'm hesitant to reveal any dates unless you're pretty sure that you're going to have some guidance that week.
Yeah, and that's why we're not going to, we're not putting out any dates with the letter. So basically, all we're saying is we're going to restart extended flexible, we're going to return to school on January 4th with extended flexible learning, and we'll have another update for them with what our plans are at that point.
I see, I see. I thought you were saying that you're going to be letting them know on January 4th what the, what the plan is and I was like, that's going to make a lot of people really excited and then really disappointed at the same time.
Yeah, no, but what we're going to communicate is, and I'm glad you asked that, thank you, Sarah. And so to provide that clarity, we're going to use that week of January 4th to assess where we're at with first, what we know the best is, do we have the staff and the ability to staff? And if we do, that's great.
And I hear you saying that, but if you, I just was concerned that if anybody sees the date of, you know, a decision will be made or will ever by January 4th, that's
Yeah.
You know, it's a reason to get really excited and people maybe won't read into the paragraph where you're saying, no, we're just, we're just talking about it that week. We're not actually like planning on doing anything that week.
Right, that's a good point, Mirica, and I will read it over probably 75 times to make sure that we're getting that as clear as we can. So, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up.
To share that, the plan that, you know, you're going to look at it that week and get more information out, I, I think it's helpful for parents to know. Even when they're going to get updates, it's helpful probably at this point, so.
Yeah, and just so that you're all, just so that you're all prepared, is I do know that there's some districts in, because we met with superintendents from the Association Metropolitan School Districts, some that are announcing that they'll return to school like the week of February 16th already. So if you have parents that hear that through a grapevine, some friends that live in districts like that, because there's a number of districts that might announce that, that's a long ways out, and I don't want to, you know, say, hey, we're going to wait that long. If we can go earlier, we will. So one of the things I just asked, you know, if you hear people say, is that, you know, I heard schools are waiting till, individual districts might say they're waiting that long. I think the vast majority of districts are going to do what we're doing, which is taking a cautious approach and be able to assess where we're at with this overall right when we get back. And my sense from my colleagues is everybody wants to return to school as soon as we can.
All right, thank you. Anything else on that? I know it's a big topic, so I don't want to move on unless, go ahead, Marilyn. You remuted yourself. There you go.
Okay. Dr. Rodeberg, I know that you do a really good job of this, but I hope that you will make it clear to our families how limited control is that we have over these decisions. I, I respect that parents want kids in school, and I think all of us want kids in school, but there are guidelines that we need to follow that we just don't have a lot of control over. So I hope that, that the public can understand that.
Thanks, Michael.
I got one more comment. Since we last met on December 4th, we talked about the modified quarantine guidelines based CDC. I do notice that MDH did adopt those, I believe, since we last met. I don't know if that's come up in any of your conversations, but I thought I'd throw that out there.
It hasn't come in the ones that I've had, but I know Tony has been looking at that. Tony, do you have any update on that?
Yep, I sure do. We, our lead nurse has been working closely with our, our neighbor lead nurses and other metro school districts. And right now, we're going to continue with the 14-day quarantine guidance. It's actually still recommended by the Department of Health. So we intend to do that through winter break. And over winter break, we're going to be designing a modified protocol, hopefully to incorporate the new 10- and 7-day quarantine adjustments that the CDC came out with. So we'll be rolling that out over winter break.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Anything else for you? Good?
Well, that's it. I just appreciate, just to put it out there, I appreciate the support that I've had from the board throughout the fall. This has been the nuttiest first trimester of a school year with all the changes and everything else. And I, as I look at my colleagues on the screen, I can't say enough about the work that they've done. The commitment of our teachers throughout the system, I think everybody's doing everything they can to make this the best experience they can with all the challenges they have. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you to my team, and thank you to the nearly 900 staff we have. And for the parents that still may be listening, we want the kids back in school as much as, much as any of you do. So it's, I miss getting, being able to walk around the schools and see a whole bunch of a bunch of kids running around. And it's also fun to hear kids saying they can't wait to come back into school. That's always what our vision's been, that we want kids to be, want to be, want to be at school and be back. And that's what we're hearing from kids. So we look forward to being able to be there. So that's it.
And it from high schoolers, because that's new. So that's pretty great. All right. Moving on then to action items. We've got a few action items tonight. We'll start with the certification of the final 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Strobel.
Second, Wheaton.
To adopt the final 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy and to certify the amounts to the Anoka County Department of Property Tax Administration. You see, there's a little chart in our agenda here. The certified 2020 levy total is $24,439,931.93. I know we've had a lot of information about this tonight, and we've talked about it at previous, previous meetings. Is there any other discussion on that before we vote on it? Thank you again to Amy and her team for all their work on that. All right, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yep, Ms. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Ms. Forsberg.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Jeff.
Ms. Wheaton, yes. Ms. Henon. Motion passes.
Move on to the resolution establishing combined polling places. We chatted about this a little bit at our last meeting as well. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Forsberg.
Thanks, John. To adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the School Board of Spring Lake Park Independent School District Number 16, State of Minnesota, as follows, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections of those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. And number two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the board may establish a combined polling place comprised of several municipal precincts for school elections not held on the day of a statewide election. The combined polling places are to be established annually prior to December 31st to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. Those combined polling places are listed below. Precinct 1 encompasses all territory in Spring Lake Park School District 16, located in the cities of Fridley and Spring Lake Park. And Precinct 2 encompasses all territory in Spring Lake Parks with School District Number 16, located in the city of Blaine. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the following polling places are hereby designated for said combined precincts for all special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Precinct 1, Woodcrest Elementary School, 880 Osborne Road, Northeast in Fridley. And Precinct 2, the National Sports Center, the Welcome Center, 1750 105th Avenue, Northeast in Blaine. As we've discussed previously, they're the same locations we had for our last elections. Pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 205a.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And the clerk shall also file a certified copy of this resolution with said county auditor. Any discussion? All right, clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Ms. Forsberg. Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Wheaton, yes. Ms. Henon. Motion passes.
Finally, moving on to acknowledgement of gifts. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, Wheaton.
Second, Strobel.
Second. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states that a school board may accept a gift of real or personal property by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Spring Lake Park Schools accepts with appreciation the gifts as shown. I know we got these as an attachment. I don't know if they're easy to put up on the screen, but as always, we are very grateful to our community for their support. Anybody else have a discussion on that? I know there were several donations to the Panther Pantry, which is wonderful. Here it comes. Thanks, Erica. Great. Any other discussion on the acknowledgement of gifts? Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Ms. Forsberg. Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Wheaton, yes. Ms. Henon. Motion passes.
Thanks. All right, moving on to board forum and reports. Does anybody have anything they want to share? I'm looking at you, Marilyn. You have anything you're going to, I think, I think I see you talking, but I can't hear you.
Well, we'll try this. Does that work better? Yes. Um, I've been to a lot of meetings on Zoom, and I'll try not to be too lengthy here. 916 is putting together a mobile unit. It's a trailer. It's a mobile education center, and they're going to currently use that to accommodate certain difficult parts of the student population to do a one-on-one, and they eventually plan to use it for testing and other items, and probably even add more of those kinds of vehicles. I was to an IEIC Help Me Grow meeting. Those are only quarterly. But it was very interesting because the chairs of a group called Reach Out and Read were there. And it's a situation where books are in pediatricians' offices that are in multiple languages, and they are age-appropriate for children. And each child is given a book when they come for a regular pediatric check. And in communities which are not likely to do a lot of reading, this has been a great motivation to get those students, those children to have their regular checkups. So it's a very interesting conversation. They told us that by age three, most children have 80% of their brain growth. And by age five, they have 90%. And that all parents should be reading aloud to their children. I think we all knew that. Then I was a delegate to Delegate Assembly, which is the, almost a legislative branch of MSBA. There were 11 resolutions this year, and this usually is a whole weekend event, and it was done in three hours on Zoom. There were two resolutions having to do with school finance, which seems to be an appropriate topic this evening. The first one was to allow districts to use the greater pupil counts from from October one, twenty nineteen, or October one, twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty-one school year. There are a number of districts who have had quite a reduction in pupils um due to the COVID event, and so their pupil count may be way down, but won't necessarily be next year, and of course, that would take a real hit to their um funding. The second one is also a home hold harmless resolution, and this had to do with free and reduced lunches. And the count for free and reduced has been greatly reduced this year because there are so many districts that have provided lunch without folks having to apply for that. And um well, I don't know if this is an Erica assignment or not, but um particularly next year, it's going to be really important that we tell folks that it not only is a lunch program, but that a lot of our other funding is tied to free and reduced and and that people should apply for that. But again, trying to use the counts either from nineteen or twenty, whichever was the the greatest. Then there is a resolution um that applied to all districts, but particularly those with a high population of um level four special education students. And that was that the MSB urged the legislature to oppose legislation that requires, requires being the key word, school districts to allow a nurse who is not an employee of the school district to accompany a student during the school day. And it sounded on the surface so wonderful that the student could take the nurse that they normally see to school, but then there were some questions regarding who pays for that and what what the school's relationship is with this person who is not their employee, but who would be in their building. And that probably had the most discussion of all, but it did pass on a ninety-six to thirty-three vote. Um, and now all of these proposals are just proposals that the MSBA lobbyists will carry. We are not submitting legislation, but it's always an interesting uh conversation. And I also attended the AMSD meeting. Maybe Mr. Strobel has some comments on that. Thank you.
I actually don't because I was unable to attend that meeting this this month, so, sorry.
Then I will say that a platform was adopted um which primarily supports the first two resolutions that I told you about counts and about uh student counts as well as free and reduced, and a number of other of other platform provisions. Some of which are carried over from previous years and some which are new this year, but that meeting was primarily regarding the platform that that organization will use this year.
Yes, thanks, Marilyn. All right, anybody else? Board forum?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Marilyn for uh serving on those committees, uh serving as delegate and uh being such a good voice and always keeping us up to date with what's going on. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It's just been my pleasure to serve on all of those and um I think the more, the more you do of that, the more you learn and and uh realize how complicated school districts really are. But thank you.
Thank you.
Miss here, but I couldn't find a link. It had to be on the end like Marilyn. Yes, thanks for doing that, Marilyn. I was going to ask a quick question. I don't have a report to give, but it's clean. My my pictures all just moved. It's clean. Yeah, there you are. Clean stall, Nicole. Um, so first I wanted to give a plug because the Panther Foundation is starting to put its information out about supporting um a virtual gala, and it looks to me like it's going to be about supporting the Panther Pantry, which is wonderful. Um, and clean, I guess I just wanted to check in with you on, I know the Panther Pantry has given a lot over the last, uh, since March to help out families and kind of how things are going from that perspective and to, I don't know, put a plug in for supporting the Panther Foundation for that.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, we're getting excited about an event announcement that will happen right around uh January fourth. We uh, and that's for the Panthers for a Purpose Event that'll happen February twenty-seventh, which is the last Saturday in the month of February. So it's not going to be a gala this year. It's going to be completely different, a virtual event, but all the proceeds will support the Panther Pantry and the Weekend Pack Program. As you know, from uh earlier reports earlier this fall, we did go through quite a few weekend packs from March through uh the summer months, and so we need to replenish those funds. If folks are looking for a place to donate before the end of the calendar year, of course, the school district and the Panther Pantry would be a great place to do so. So we would welcome any and all donations, and we encourage all of our community to get involved with the Panthers for the Purpose Event in February. It's going to be an event that we believe will uh it it'll be something that anybody can attend. Uh, there will be no fee to attend, and so uh being a part of that event will be something that will will be able to celebrate as a community and unite us and raise some good money for a good cause.
Thanks, Clayne. I'm looking forward to it. Everybody mark your calendar. All right, wonderful. Anything else from anybody on Board Forum? All right, we will move into closed session then. Amy, you ready with your chart? Your chart's going to be busy pretty soon here. All right, moving into closed session. Can I get a motion to enter into closed session to discuss purchase of property?
So moved, Wheaton.
Forsberg.
Berg, uh, any discussion? All right, clerk, could you call the roll?
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Ms. Forsberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Wheaton, yes. Ms. Henin? Motion passes.
All right. Can you let me know, just give me a thumbs up when you're ready for us to.
Just give me a minute.
Okay. John, I'm appreciating your festive background. I really need to embrace festive backgrounds a little more. I'm sure looking at the canned lights in my ceiling is just wonderful for all of you.